So the zoning board of affairs for January 15th, 2019, come to order. Please call the board.
Mr. McElwah?
Present.
Mr. Figueroa? Absent. Mr. Woodton? Mrs. Curley?
I'm here.
Mr. Wood?
Present.
Mr. Cole?
Present.
Mr. Gisono?
Present.
Is there a motion accepted minutes from the last meeting on December 4th?
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Cole, stated by Ms. Curley. Yeah, yeah, no?
Yep.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Not so good. First case tonight will be case number 98648 Coolidge Circle.
Allow an accessory store structure to be located outside yard private lot in the aisle one district with less than required side yard and rear yard setback. Now, the case is now open.
And the floor for anybody wishing to speak in favor of this petition.
The date of.
Which petition is it?
Well, it's I will check. And we will go for.
Step up, give your name.
Jennifer Baker. And here's the plot plan in my home. I made a few copies. We're gonna have some pictures that I sent the letter.
Do you have an updated plot plan showing the shed on the lot?
I do not. I do not. So it's a private way. And I have two properties on my left and right that said a lot. It's. It is on the side of my property.
How big is it?
Two hundred, under 200 square feet. Under 200 square feet.
How tall is it?
It's tall.
I think it's a little over 100 feet should've been.
Yeah, I don't know the measurements of the height of it. First of all, I didn't get a letter to be here. The only way I knew to be here tonight is through a neighbor that owns the land sent me a letter, which I'm very thankful for because they didn't even receive a letter. From what I understand, my neighbors are unhappy with it, which I apologize. I didn't have the ability to, you know, upset anybody. We do have our family, we have a lot of stuff, so we needed a shed. The land is all rough ledge and it's hills and, you know, it's very difficult to have a level area. There's not much land that's leveled. So that was the only area that was flat enough to do a shed. We did get the material of the vinyl siding from our property at 30 Pickham Street, River. We had a house fire, so we salvaged the vinyl siding. We did plan on painting it and putting tall shrubs around it, you know. But if there's anything I can do, and then I received a letter from a landowner that's next to me that it may be on their border or property line, which there's a stake in the ground when we purchased the property stating that that's our boundary, our property line is the stake from the surveyor. And around the rest of my home is fence. So I went by the stake, you know, if by any chance, if they have a land surveyor for their property, I would appreciate to look at it.
What are the dimensions on the?
No, I know.
What we gave you here, you guys could do.
We went by the property, but we went by the land marker that was there when the real estate agent told us, this is your property line that goes all the way down. That's the only area that didn't have a fence, but there was stakes in the ground. So we assumed that's our land, you know, it was surveyed. So the stakes in the ground clearly mean that it's, you know, my property.
Well, the stake, wooden stake in the ground is just, that's what he said, it's a wooden stake in the ground.
Right, but that's from the land surveyor. Yeah, but the people that sold me the property were, you know, all the people, they didn't seem like.
They told us that's where the land.
Did you take any time to look up any of the rules of where it could be?
Well, yeah, we had the building inspector.
So we did.
It was square feet, we were having a deck built on the back.
So why is it so big then?
Because my builders.
Because all my guys.
He said we lost our. That's too many acres.
Couple of inches.
You need to stay.
All of them.
So.
If you talk.
Because it's a pretty big shed and it's not conforming at all, so.
A little bit more than we. Yeah.
But I mean, if we put shrubs around it, whatever I guess makes the neighbors happy, I don't want to upset anybody.
Yeah, we didn't do anything essentially to it.
Any questions?
Where is the miss, miss drive?
Okay, so the floor zero is the tree, the big tree, and then right under the big tree.
Hold that.
It's not here. Yeah, yeah, the shed is right there.
Where are the drivers?
The driveway is over here. Which, you know, my husband and I take care of the land that's for sale, who ever owns it, I don't know. But we cut down trees that are dead, I mean, we do sweep out with the.
Know all the dimensions of the shed?
Well, it sits on a, the slab is what, 10 by 10?
15 feet high, 12 by 188 inches.
I mean, and we built it from, you know, it's really built well, so to move it is very costly because I'm going to have to take the whole thing, you know, down. I mean, if I have to take it down, I have to take it down, but.
Well, anything under 200 square feet, I was told. I asked the inspector at the time. One of my workers died that week and two of my guys were working too high from my stand, so. But I can send, I don't know if I sent the 134 apartment or if I have to.
Yeah, the building inspector did come.
Whatever we have to do to help.
Yeah, we do plan on building shrubs around it, you know, planting, so it does, it hides it because I don't, you know, I don't like the color that it is and I don't like the location either myself, but that's the only place I actually could build it, you know.
Goes like 40 feet from inside of the ads together and it's just like.
I mean, do you want to put, input that? My neighbors.
Well, no, I'll open the floor.
Oh, I don't know how it works. I mean, I just want to make them happy. I don't want to upset anybody.
Is there any other questions from the board?
Yeah, no, the Coolidge Circle, does that entire circle is a private way?
Yes.
Because there are other building lots up there, right?
Yes, there is. Two, four, oh.
Do you guys plow it or does he get?
Well, the city doesn't plow, so I take care of it all. I sale code it the whole time, especially when there's that side. And that cost me, you know, a good chunk of change.
There's four those of a lot?
I cut down all the street that plants over there, I take care of it.
Four? So one person owns two on my side of the shed is, set two? This is 117 that shows on my, that's two, and then two on the other.
All right, let's stick with what we got going on here.
So my only other question is, at this point, we really can't tell if that shed is under property or not because you didn't follow the instructions to submit it on a certified plot.
That's what the building inspector told us.
No, we don't, you must've got, you must've got the instructions to fill out the application that says why don't it?
No, the building.
The one you said here says mortgagee, lender, new zone. So this is a moving plot plan.
Well, that's what I was, that's what was given to me when I touched it, now it's re-enslapped.
So who filled this out? Me. So I mean, there's two would tell you what you had to do, so you did your, you know.
We're done with a deck.
Yeah, we didn't fill out anything first.
So were you saying you didn't fill out anything?
No, because the building inspector didn't say we needed anything. He looked at it, we said, can we build a shed? He said, I didn't have anything under 200 square feet.
What happened? Is that true?
So then I asked you a question, why are you here?
Because.
If the building department said, told you how to book it to build, why are you here?
Because a neighbor complained.
A neighbor complained.
And you don't think that triggered it?
Yes, because the building inspector was fine.
Triggered it because she has down on our lawn, something, pretty confusing, I guess.
Well, your building inspector should've told me that because money doesn't come very easy.
You realize that now.
When we ask, when we build a shed here, and he said, let your conscience be your guide, that, that's not, you know, I mean, he should've told me. I'm not in the building department business. I don't know the rules like you do. This is your business.
Well, this is your application, that you.
That was for a deck.
So.
That was.
Get out of there.
Shed on the side.
It's your responsibility.
Well, then that was after it was built, after someone made a complaint.
But again, at that time.
I didn't fill for a shed.
At that time when you filled this out and you understood what you needed to have, you didn't think maybe to get a plot plan to make sure that it actually is on.
When it came to a spec like that, I asked him, is that going to be okay? Anything under 200 square feet, you shouldn't have an issue with it. It's a private lot shed. Took a look at it and everything.
The building inspector just sort of informed us, what is in everything legally lawful, it should be.
By law, you're right, it's not supposed to be there.
Did you take a look at it for it?
He didn't say we needed it, right?
Anything under.
Your building inspector said we did not need it.
No, but the time out, let's stop blaming the building department.
No, no, I know.
It's serious.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor this time? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition at this time? Here and now, I'm going to close it for those in favor. I'll open the floor for anybody who's in opposition. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Stand up, give your name and address.
My name is William Shorette, and I built number eight Coolidge Circle. And I own the two properties adjacent to Coolidge Circle. This is the original plot plan the city did in 1920. My father-in-law at one time owned the land up there, he brought it up in pieces. It borders the Swansky Town Forest, then it owns Harold King Town Forest. I know it's not legally acceptable, but an asotucive interactive property mapping, which is GPS by satellite, shows where the circle is, shows where the property lines are, shows the following information. There's a GPS site that Earth's divided into longitude and latitude, as everybody knows, the equator being zero and north pole being 90. In that particular plot plan, when you take mass interactive mapping, there's a cursor, you put it right down at any property line, it gives you the GPS mapping. Get your old cell phone out, turn it on, and then we use, I'll pass this down to the It shows you the property lines and it gives you the old Google map, the flyover. When I built that house, I was, and all the site work was done, I was getting ready to get my building permit to put the foundation in, and I got everybody in the city of Lynn signed off except for the buyer part. They said, Bill, we're not going to let you build that up here unless you put the old circle in that the city of Lynn wants. I hired a very nice lawyer from Lynn, went to the board of appeals, and he ended up getting me a variance to put in a public safety turnaround that it owns a hammerhead, which was blasted out so fire trucks and ambulances turnaround. In this photo here, you'll see the hammerhead is where that white van is and some other equipment.
Yeah, you can't turn it.
Also, when they blasted the ledge up there, they made a mark in the ledge, which was the edge of my property and the circle. The lady that just spoke before me mentioned that the realtor showed her some wooden stakes. Those are elevation stakes for blasting. The actual benchmark is in a rear of 22 Westview Road. There's a funky jog out there in the fence line. In other words, it's an oddball fence post. That was always the property line marking. And it runs out at an angle. Again, you have to be a math major. My degree is in criminal justice, not math. But the spray, when the engineer blasted in there, it cost me a lot of money, had to bring the blaster back, he spray painted an orange line on the ledge in a spot, and that's faded out to white. Again, it's not illegal, but if you look at the satellite map, the tree that might, that's planted there, and the way you look down, that is, in my opinion, not only in the circle, but over on that zero Coolidge Road land. Again, whatever paperwork they used, my surveys, I had Chuckie there, the engineer, he had stuffed that house up in the corner, close to the Swansky Town Line, in order to fit so in the future, those two lots, three lots or whatever they are, could fit a house. Again, if the board wants to give them a variance for something that's, I don't know, I, in my opinion, over, way too close into the circle, if they want to give up me a variance and anybody future there not to blast out that circle, I'm sure they'd be more than thrilled just to put a couple of driveways in there, not all the expense. I mean, I think it was that 20 grand to get that hammerhead in there, which apparently is not an issue anymore. That's it. Any questions?
Can I keep your address, please?
Sure. 692 Cook Road, Carmel, Maine.
And what number do you own?
I own, well, they call them zeros.
Zero Coolidge Road, it says we own the.
They're lots, parcels, pieces, whatever. When I built, by the way, when I built that, I was going to name it number five. The city changed it to number eight. They must have, for whatever reason, think this.
Sir, on the rock, could you show me where the orange line used to be?
Are you telling me there's a circle?
Is there anybody else wishing to speak in opposition?
No.
But there's the block.
So I just want to know.
See our four women? We're going to have the only ones every night, so I want to keep this moving. Anybody else in opposition?
I have a question on that. It says rear, the rear yard setbacks, and it's the front yard. It's not in the rear of the property.
No, no.
From the side.
It's the side yards. Can't be in the side yard or the other front.
It's in the front.
That's the way it was written. The violation is, it's because it's, they interpreted that it was in the side yard.
Right, but then it says that required side yard and rear side setbacks. It's not in the rear, it's in the front.
Okay. Hi, my name's David Bowen. I'm on 12 Westview Road. I have my butter, two and a butter space, I think. I had sent in a letter, which I believe Mary got.
We have it.
So I just wanted to say that we are opposed to zoning variances of the general rule. And it's a private area.
Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing that there's none, I'm going to close the floor for those in opposition. What is the wish of the board?
He needs a proper plot plan for now. I don't disagree.
I'll make a motion to deny.
The second?
I'll second.
Who's second?
Motion made by Ms. Curley to deny, seconded by Mr. Cowan. Call the board.
Who's second?
I'm sorry. No calls, all right.
Mr. Gisono, Mr. McElwah's on this one. Mr. McElwah? Mrs. Curley? Mr. Wood?
No, to deny.
No, to deny. Mr. Gisono? Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Yes, to deny?
No.
No, to deny.
Motion is denied.
And we can nail that, right, sir? Yeah.
So let me ask you something. On that plot plan, I find it, my cousin's wife mentioned the house, that's all along. You have the house.
I would speak to an attorney. I walk the land, you know, you start jumping over the right hoops and.
Got it. Yeah, I appreciate it. I mean, I ask you a legal question, right? People that own the land, aren't they supposed to take care of the trees and maintenance?
That's not for the shed. Good night. Have a good night.
Have a good night. Take down the shed, either way.
Should we have to take down the shed?
I mean, I thought we should drop that.
Okay. I just wanted to know what's there. So I have some time to figure out.
Case number two tonight is a continued case, case number 9858, 143 South Street.
Yeah, I think since it became laws, I think we have to keep it.
Yeah, we have to.
Yeah. I'm going to keep your phone, but.
Sorry, so you want to.
Oh, yeah. We can keep all that stuff in this folder.
Yes.
It's for.
Okay, Mr. Wood, you're on this one? Folks, can we, take a seat, take a seat for the hall, please?
All right, continued case.
That's right, that's right, yeah, it's stayed like it was.
Case number 9858, Joseph Rock, by the attorney, senior Lieutenant Tally. Allow welcome rates to a one-story garage in the Art Core Apartment House District on a non-conforming lot containing 8725 square feet and frontage of 29 feet with a pre-existing non-conforming two-family dwelling thereon, and permitted two-story addition above the garage to be used for dwelling purposes. Said lot was less than the required lot size frontage and right side yard with lot coverage in excess of 40 percent.
I'm Attorney Lieutenant Tally. With me again is Joseph, his wife, and John Tumaz, who did a plan. The case was continued for a couple of reasons. One was that he wanted a new plot plan. The other was he wanted to see a building plan with elevations. John did the building plan with the elevations. Mr. Reed did the plot plan. I left, and I think here he had, I don't know whether the members have, Mr. Reed's plan, but we think that these plans that are before you now address any of your requests can be expressed concerns as we understood. And let me just review it. As you know, Joseph's, our grandmother and his aunt, are the record owners of the property, 143 South Street. Joseph's on the mortgage with his grandmother and his aunt, they live there. Joseph has the good fortune of having two sets of twins, one three and one one, so two of each. He wants to build on the property that his family's own community is. It's in an Art Core district in which the apartment house district, more than one building is municipal on the lot. With respect to the garage, it was a sturdy-built building, but when we were here, the concern was, as we understood it, that the proposal that we had exceeded what certain members of the board felt was suitable for the site. And so we revised that to a one-story addition. But there were some trade-offs involved because we had originally planned to use the lower portion of the garage. Mr. Reed did his plan. He concluded that there wouldn't be sufficient maneuverability for parking spaces that we had planned in the garage to now be outside the garage. So that now you have before you the parking plan that shows the requisite number of spaces. And there's two ways to arrive at that number. The existing two-family home, the really required number of spaces for that home is zero because it was there in 1964 when parking came in. The current requirement, and when you make a change, there's no question, you need to conform and meet the current parking requirement. The current parking requirement for a two-family car is three spaces. So Mr. Reed did a plan that shows three spaces, I think the numbers one, two, three, that are the closest to the two-family dwelling. Those are the three spaces assigned to the existing two-family. With respect to the garage, that would be a single-family building. It would just be one floor above, that was what Mr. Tumaz's plan is. It would be on top of the existing garage, and we didn't exceed the height requirements. But once we do that, the existing parking requirement for a single-family, it had two spaces, and we show two spaces at the rear of it, at the lot, at the end of the driveway. Those two spaces and the three spaces equal five, and three or more parking requirement is five. So we think that the plot plan addresses the required number of spaces, and those spaces, according to the surveyor, satisfy the design standards for width, length, and maneuverability. We also had the surveyor designate on the area that we didn't want to take down if we didn't have to, the existing pool and the area that had been fenced off in the past. We retained that, and then we've talked about how to soften the driveway with the gravel so we can also put in some of the plantings that are shown on Mr. Reed's plan. With respect to the dwelling, it's essentially, and John can speak to it better than I since he designed it, it's my understanding that it would have sufficient bedrooms for this, these two of them, for these guys, of which, those are the twins. And as I say, the only other persons involved in the ownership of this property are Joe's grandmother and his aunt, and I think his aunt was here last time?
Grandma.
His grandmother, right. And his grandmother obviously is supportive of this attempt to find a place for his growing family. As to the plan that you required about the layout, as I said, I think we addressed, which was the concern about adding to the garage anything more than one story. John's here, he can speak to the interior layout of the unit, but I do think that we made a good faith attempt to try to resolve what the questions were. I see that on his plan, he does have, as was required, the proposed elevations, and I think that was one of the items that led to us being retaining that and the need to get the updated plot plan. I'd be glad to answer questions the members may have. John's here, he can speak to the building plan, and of course, Joe and his wife are here, and I don't know that there are any other persons other than his family who have been directly involved in the proposal. I'm just hopeful that you all saw the revised building plan and the revised parking.
Any questions from the board?
This is like a house behind a house.
Excuse me?
It's like a house behind a house.
Well, first of all, the only place that you cannot have two buildings in a lot are in a general residence district or a single-family district. This is needed. So it is a permitted use to have more than one dwelling on a lot in an Art Core or an Art Three district. So there's no variance required for that because that's a permitted use, okay? So you can have more than one building on a lot. Secondly, it's not unusual in apartment house districts that they're in fact, generally apartment houses. The difference here is it's a single-family. And so it's a single-family on an 8,700 and something square foot lot. The two-family is a relatively small two-family, but what happens at the end of the day in terms of the calculations needed in zoning, is perceived to be three units, and three units have five required spaces. Three units have certain requirements relating to lot coverage and open space, and we think that we satisfied that. We thought that the concern was the height above the garage, and that the second was that because we were going to change that, that how would that affect the parking, and that's why we had the parking plan there. But aside view, that we need the requisite number of spaces, we need the design standard for the parking spaces, that the height that is reflected in the elevation is one that's not in excess of what the height restrictions are for that district. And so one, to your question is, yeah, there are two buildings, but one is a one-family and the other is an existing two-family in a one-and-a-half story building.
So I want to know which one of the family members is going to back the guy off 200 feet out of the driveway?
Well, we decided the young guy should get the two spaces at the rear because Grandma and his aunt live in the existing single-family. But I understand something. There was no required parking for the two-family, and these spaces are immune when added, and that we tried to take into consideration the realities of the situation, and that is that we put them closest to the two-family. that we put them closest to the two-family, closest to where his grandmother and his aunt are, and we put, you're right, we put his spaces down at the back, since he's presumably younger and, uh, can reach them, and I talked with the builder about, um, because I know that there's a trade-off, and we've talked about this before. I could, I could have come in and asked for fewer parking spaces and had more, uh, green space, but I think in that area, and you're certainly with your familiarity, I think it's important to have on-site parking. And so then the trade-off was, and I talked with the, the builder about this, is, uh, how do we do it without putting the asphalt or concrete everywhere, and he had some ideas that he gave me in terms of where the deck, where the fences now, where the, uh, pool is, how to soften that by either using gravel or slopping it, so it blends in with what we hope to do with the, uh, the landscaping. But, uh, at the end of the day, it's, it's not the Kennedy compound, it's gonna hopefully be the block family compound with grandmother, aunt, Joe, and his two sets of twins, uh, and was trying to make it work, uh, in a large lot, and I think if you recall, the last time we were here, I don't think there's anybody in opposition, and I'm not really surprised at that because I'm certain his aunt and grandmother have been good neighbors and lived there all those years, and he grew up there, so I think that, uh, in terms of the public good or the need for good support, the detriment, uh, to the public good, I don't think there's any. I think the real question is, can we meet the two thousand nineteen standards for a building that was built before the nineteen hundreds, and can we find a way to let this family use space, and, and here's a guy paying a mortgage, okay? For his grandmother and his aunt has a property that he doesn't really own until either they're, they deed it to him until their demise, and the, the other target is, he's in desperate need to find a place for his family, and what better place than where his family has had roots for all these years, and he wants to come back and be a member?
Plenty of room to get rid of the snow?
Excuse me?
Plenty of room to get rid of the snow?
Well, I would think that by, uh, mowing, but, uh, it seems to me that as long as he's not pushing it out into the street, gives this room, uh, this one, we won't have that problem, but God willing. I was just gonna say, God willing, the contingent's right, but, uh, I do think that that's one of the reasons, I, I'll tell you what the other trade-off was, and it's, and it's a choice, uh, I said you could get more space if you removed the pool, but the pool's been there, and the pool is something that, that they obviously use, and, um, and so I, I try to help people get what they want to the extent that they can, and it's lawful, and so we didn't remove the pool, but...
The houses are massive, two-some, both houses are huge, but the one-and-a-half family is almost sixty feet long.
It's a crazy shape.
This house shape proposed is, is the same, and I disagree with you when you said you did us a favor by adding the parking spaces to the one-and-a-half family. I interpreted that once you opened this property up for, you know, an alteration in non-conformity, that you'd have to meet the parking requirements throughout, not just on the one property you wanted.
No, that's why there are five spaces.
And it's, I mean, okay.
There's one, there's five spaces that are of the requisite size, requisite length, not within five feet of the street line or the property line, and they have the, the required number of five.
How long is the driveway? It doesn't, it doesn't say, I mean...
So what's the existing drive?
Does the scale write on the, the side paper?
The existing block plan, uh, the research letter?
Yeah.
So here's a current photograph of the driveway, that fits three vehicles.
Okay. But you're, you're talking about adding lawns on the side of the house, right? Because the parking space can't go right up against the house.
Correct.
At least they have five feet.
Correct.
That's five.
Yeah, you have the lawn, and you have the lawn, yeah.
So you've, you've got, you're proposing lawn, you're cutting the, the driveway down to one passable lane, it looks like to me.
Yeah.
So once the cars pull into the back house, into the back parking, they literally have to back out of the property. Two hundred feet, hundred and eighty feet.
Well, I think...
Past all the cars.
I think Mr. Reed's plan was to take those, I mean, you pull out, you, you pull in, back into your space, and then you can pull out and drive down the driveway. I mean, you don't, it's how you pull in those spaces, the two at the rear, they're side by side.
Yep. I mean, heaven forbid if it smells. Any other questions for the board? Any other questions? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this?
Thirty-three Beechab.
I'm sorry, what would you mean?
Joseph's Rock. Thirty-three Beechab. Pretty much, I just wanted to say that we weren't fair last time, this time, I think we're, we're in it, and this parking plan doesn't, it did more weight than that parking plan. We have, I have myself four cars, laid all that through, and then we also have three more, so the seven cars. There's more than enough of a park.
I don't, I don't disagree with you from the photo that he showed, but what you're not thinking about is what you're proposing on this plan is the yard. You're talking about adding green.
It, it's all green.
The picture that you just showed was all asphalt.
That's front yard.
But you're, you're talking about adding grass in the...
From, from the fence back with the pools, I thought that, there's two different fences, there's a fence in the front yard, and then there's another fence.
Well, what I'm saying to you is along the whole one-and-a-half spilling structure, all asphalt, now, you're proposing grass.
Portion of that grass.
Portion, yeah. I'm just saying, so you're taking one, one squad, a good chunk of that, that space you're talking about, the passing space away, that's fine, continue, so, yeah.
That's pretty much it, I just wanna make sure that you guys know that there is significant parking.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this?
Hi, my name is Pamela Hernandez, I live at thirty-three Beechab now. Um, this is just something that we really truly want to just find of our own, I mean, we have four kids, and finding a place that is even reasonable with those guys is so expensive. So Grandma always comes to the house, making four times a week to watch the kids, and how nice it would be just to have her in our backyard to just walk over the bees to the kids. Um, we're really thinking long-term for the kids, we just want them to each have their own personal space, and where we are now, and we've moved six times in the last four years, and we still haven't found the perfect place, so we believe this, what we drew up would be perfect for us. Thank you.
Anybody else in favor? Saying no, I'll close it for those in favor. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Saying is no, I'll close it for those in opposition. What is the wish of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I, you understand their plan, what, uh, what their dreams are, but I tell you, for that lot, I just think that house is, is just too big. I just think it's too massive if you're trying to do something with your in-laws, even if you're trying to add on to the existing house. To me, I would, I would probably look, I'd consider that, I guess, but to put this structure on the back of that lot, I just think, this is my opinion, I just think it's, I think it's too much for that lot.
I don't disagree. Motion?
I'm making motion to deny.
I'll second it. Motion to bounce the call, so I could have one minute. Call the board?
Mr. McCullough?
Um, yes, approved.
So, it's motion is denied?
It's all denied, so, uh, yes, so...
Yes, to the night? Mr. Wood?
Is there a way to make the house a little bit smaller?
The existing garage is already there?
Unfortunately, it works, it, it's, at this point, you're in a, yes or no situation.
Um, I'd like to deny.
Yes?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly?
Deny.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Gisano?
Yes, to deny. Motion is denied. The next case, case number nine eight six seven, um, forty to fifty Ocean Street. You think, Mr. Chairman?
We might have, I agree with it, so, why not? To allow the conversion of two non-conforming commercial units without the required five parking spaces into two conforming residential units without the required three parking spaces within existing non-conforming building in the Art Core District.
Before, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm here, uh, my name is Dan Kato, corner of Valor Avenue in Massachusetts, and I'm here on behalf of my client, James Zerius, and I'm here in my capacity as an attorney for grabbing more purposes in cup and weather, located eighty-five exchange shooting list. We're here for variance for required parking, but we'd like to talk about the budget a little bit. Currently, Mr. Zerius has owned this property for about thirty years now. There are two non-conforming commercial businesses in that building. It's Art, sorry, we're talking about two of those units, it's an Art Core district for residential. The plan would be to convert those commercial spaces to residential, making that portion of the building conforming with the zoning requirements of Art Four. Uh, it would be one moment and one two bedroom. Currently, with the two commercial spaces, there is a requirement for five off-street parking spots. It is a non-conforming building, therefore, it is not, uh, is, uh, does not need to have the five off-spot, uh, off-street parking spots, but there are parking, there is parking on the property, I think about seven spots that are currently there. Unfortunately, because it's a non-conforming building with seven spots, uh, we are unable to reduce that non-conformity, so we can't count any of those parts towards the three necessary. So the proposal here today is to request that we go to, uh, a less intensive parking requirement from commercial, which requires the five off-street parking spots, which we don't, to residential, uh, which requires three off-street parking, uh, uh, off-street parking spots, which we also require.
How many residential units are in the building now?
I don't know.
Seven now. We could bump, bump it up to nine.
There'll also be, uh, removal of any commercial type of signage on the outside. Again, making it more conforming with the Art Core intent of residential. This is a number of the long-term tents that had left, and the commercial retail space market is not, uh, as vibrant as it used to be with residential being more, uh, attractive to potential resource.
So there are three storefronts?
Right.
And you wanna make two of them living spaces, and you have how many parking spaces for the three storefronts? Right now?
Because it's non-conforming, there are no off-street parking specific to those commercial spaces or dedicated.
Well, I thought there was some parking in the back.
There's parking, there's, there's spots, but that, that goes with the non-conforming building, so we're not allowed to reduce the number of spots for that non-conforming building, so we wouldn't be able to designate three of them as potential, uh, residential off-street spots for this project, because that would be violation of its non-conformity.
So whoever comes first?
No. They would be, uh...
So we'll push the back.
Counterpounds?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so you, they have access to the right?
Right.
Okay, that's, that's, that's the answer.
Correct.
Now, how many square feet are these two businesses? The businesses or the proposed residential?
Same size.
Same size?
Yeah.
Are you sure one's gonna be a one bedroom and one's gonna be a...
Yeah, well, it's a nice layout, I looked at it.
Yeah.
They're actually gonna, it's a, it's an attractive, attractive area for residential down there.
I think that removing that sign will be, uh, doubtful to the neighborhood, it's a, I think, sign, but when you're renting retail, they all want their signage. How many square feet was the, uh, the... I think about eight hundred, uh, I think the other one's about six. Any other questions from the board? Any other questions? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor?
I'm in favor. Um, my name is Joe Cloyden, um, I live just next door to the property, um, I live there currently on thirty-four Ocean, I'm there during day and evening, and, um, I don't think there'd be any impact in terms of parking, um, as to what is there now, um, for, with what, you know, what would be there at all. Um, and it would, uh, it would actually improve the, um, the, um, community a little bit in terms of that old commercial style, uh, as you're saying, signage, the windows and stuff like that, because it's, it's, it's just a difficult area for, um, you know, for, um, for, for business now, so I don't think it'll be, I don't think it'll impact, um, the area, um, um, at all, and, um, I'm there, you know, all the time, so.
Anybody else wishing, anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Saying is no, I'm gonna close it for those in favor. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposite, opposition? Anybody else who speaks in opposition?
I'm not completely opposed, but my name is Lauren Beadman, and I own forty-seven, forty-nine Ocean Street, I also partially own forty-three Ocean Street, uh, and my only concern is, is the parking in the area. Recently, they moved a bus stop in front of my property, which removed four residential parking spaces from in front of that area, um, and I currently have tenants, we have off-street parking, but I currently have tenants who have to park halfway down Michigan out, um, to find parking, so that area is very difficult for parking, and that's my only concern. Um, I am working to try and get the MBTA to move that bus stop to an area that does not affect residential parking, um, but that is my only concern with this, is that parking in that area is, is very, very tight, and we have done, you know, the best in our area, I mean, I have tenants that aren't even mine, but I'm letting them park on my property to get them off-street, so we're working really hard to get as many people off-street, but the parking in that area is very, very difficult.
You have three more businesses?
Was that? They're, they're all, I get it, right? In that area, that block, I mean, I have four apartments, it's a weird building, there's two behind me, and then there's another three families, so that's nine apartments on my one block, and then next door, he has an eleven family, and he only has two or three off-street parking spaces for eleven apartments, so there's twenty apartments in that one block. Um, that's, so that's the only concern I have, I mean, he is absolutely hundred percent correct with that sign went down, that would be good, now, you know, I don't think anyone loves the sign up front, but I think that's the biggest concern is, is the parking, um, in an already congested area.
Thank you, Melanie. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? Saying is no, I'll close it for those in opposition. What is the wish of the board?
Well, I think I have, see, living quarters are the empty storefronts, so I make the motion to deny.
I'll second. Motion to grant on Ms. Curly, second about Mr. Wood, please call the board.
Mr. Wood?
I'll have to grant.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Gisano?
Yes, to grant. Next case is case number nine six five twenty-eight Thompson Street. Anybody here at the Thompson? Before we actually get started, there's a, a letter here from Counselor Seer, um, requesting that we continue this, um, are you guys aware of that, the district, he was kinda hoping to get the, you know, the packet, the drawings, the information, so he could review them and review them with some of the neighbors in the area that had some question. Are you willing to agree to that and postpone it, or would you like to... Or would you like to...
I mean, I can tell you, we're at the warrens for almost a year. And if we get approved on this, we secure a rental property, which we would start at the beginning of February. I think the next, if we move it, it's like February fifth. The only thing I'm afraid of is, you know, this doesn't get approved, and I have thousands of dollars out of pocket for rental property.
Why not rent a property?
Because it's a complete renovation. So we're not going to be able to stay there as we need to do.
I think you're putting up a secondary structure in that.
We're gonna, I think they've got...
It's a total...
It's a... It's a...
Because you know, you know, we're granted tonight, you know, there's an appeal period?
Sure.
It'll take about a month before you even, you know... You can get the paperwork.
Sure, sure.
I just, I mean, there must be some reason that he is looking for this, so I just...
I mean, I reached out a couple of weeks ago. I counted back and forth, I spoke with the secretary a couple of times, and then we talked again yesterday. And she was like, oh, I'd love to look at it and help any way you can. So, you know, send me over the designs. And I'm like, well, we're literally meeting with the zoning board tomorrow. And she's like, well, she really had what to say. She said, I guess go talk to them, if you would want to table it, just so you can take a look at them ahead of time. So initially, when I went downstairs, they basically said, hey, you know, we would recommend you talk to your ward counselor and, you know, ahead of time. And I wondered if...
So we don't have the authority to table it. So all we can do is, we can continue it.
Continue.
But, you know, typically, in a situation like this, we would continue it, but...
Just sorry, does that mean if we discuss it, you would potentially like get your day tonight?
If we open the case, there's going to more than likely be a decision made tonight unless there was some compelling reasons of a question by a board member to continue or, you know, something doesn't make sense and we had to revisit it or... Which is very important.
Okay, you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're all owners. So I'm going to open the meeting. So, closing prayer.
All right. You're in this, obviously. The Sanrio Bridge, Twenty-Eighth Thompson Street.
Sorry, Nipper Goochey, Twenty-Eighth Thompson Street.
Not mosaic, it's a design you have to check. Thirty-fourth very good road, so I'm just going to message you.
So, I guess I'll... So it's actually my mother's property. The backstory is, you know, the home is very, very old. We had moved in with my mother several years ago. My mother's undergoing treatment for cancer. So we have children. The idea is, you know, you don't want to, you know, move away. So you would love to be able to run every home, make it a better, a better-looking area, a better-looking neighborhood. But for our family, the current size is very small. So we've been working on a design which we feel would accommodate, you know, both our, you know, our entire family. And creating, going from a single family to a multi, a two-family, a legal two-family, with a beautiful in-law apartment for my mother. And then, you know, a home for my wife and kids and myself. A couple of dogs. And there is parking for three, potentially four. I knew that three was, you know, the minimum requirement. We could potentially do four. But...
Could you show me on the flat plan where you could forepass both the tenant parking, so there's a spot in the garage?
Inside the garage.
In the garage. And then tenant parking in the driveway itself. Given that it's a family that is using? So you're talking staff parking because...
Yeah, but it's all, it's all...
Yes, maybe not, but you don't know where it's going to be in the future. You know, saying, when we, when we approve land, we're evolving for fifty, seventy-five years. It's not the common situation. Although, we take that into consideration, but it's not the driving forces. Are we improving the neighborhood? Or are we not improving the neighborhood?
Based on the current layout of the home that we buy, I believe it would be greatly improving the neighborhood. Our next door neighbors are a multi-family. Across the street, we've got another multi-family down the street. So it's a mix of single and multi. You know, the home needs, it needs a lot of work. And we thought this would be an awesome opportunity to make it better for our family and make it better for the neighborhood.
So working with the design itself, working with the family's needs and current needs and future needs. Either the mother is living with them, they have the space of her own. And they have two kids as well from Rome. So right now, currently, five people are living in a level of one square feet currently that is in a very big need of help in regards to updates. And it really is a lot of... So the proposed structure itself is using the front foundation as well as the side foundation that's existing. And using those exterior walls that's existing. There's an existing garage structure that was in a back end that has been since deteriorated and fallen down. So there's a pad in the foundation that we're using as a spot for a new garage with an in-law suite coming down from below and above. And then the menu, that means the three-bedroom meeting on the first floor, living, dining, kitchen, and working up to the three bedrooms for them and the kids. So working with the zoning, we have, obviously, it's an existing, a small lot. And getting through their family needs pretty much is, this is what we came up with, as an attractive approach to spruce up the Thompson Street.
The problem that I have with these is, you know, opening the door anytime after we're done with this, for this to turn into a good general structure now, because you've got a separate apartment, you've got a separate apartment. You're adding essentially another apartment to this house.
Well, that'd be a free apartment, the zoning...
The way you're, what I'm saying, it would take no effort to turn it from what you're making it now into a multi-income home. And that's where these turn into trouble, because there's no parking here. Staff parking is, you know, no with us, because it never works out. But, I mean, that's just my opinion. That's where the problems with these lines. You're taking that garage and you're essentially saying, anybody can live there at any time. You know, we ask its current intentions now. But what you guys are doing isn't forever either, you know? That's the issue.
We're planning on staying there for, like, for one time.
Things change, unfortunately. That's the reality. That was just my opinion. Any questions from the board?
I have one question. Basically, the house on the left-hand side, you've got the four windows there. And that must be the family room?
It's a...
It's supposed to be a family room, yeah.
It's a family room, I guess.
At the moment.
So I just wanted to know, because I'll try to read the plans on the, on the demo on the reconstruction of this building. Are you going, taking the house out to, out to, out to the, out to where?
So looking at the survey, the gray outline is the existing outline of the building.
Yeah.
And then the dark black line is the new proposed footprint.
Yeah, so you're making the up big enough.
Correct, yes. Yes, the house is, the lower corner, lower, I believe, the lower right is the existing corner where that stage, that foundation, those existing walls remain. And then we're going out a bit on the left and then going out to where the existing garage was.
Have you done the couch? What's the coverage?
So the coverage, basically, is fifty-three percent. So yes, we're over, over the coverage. We're...
It's supposed to be three, right?
Correct. We're over coverage. We are under the height, thirty-five is the required, we're thirty feet. So basically, you know, to kind of keep the structure down, we're, the second store is designed to the roof with dormers and sort of, you know, to bring it attractive for the home. And the setbacks, you know, given that it's an existing nonconforming, so we're staying with the existing nonconforming on the existing sides. And then we're keeping the setbacks on the left and the front as well.
I have a question. So I just feel like it's a big project. I just wondered, do you guys think about relocating?
Absolutely. A couple of things went into that decision. Firstly, my mother and mom being sick. She lives here in Lynn, she's lived here in Lynn almost her entire life. He was raised here in Lynn. I brought my kids here, that's the house that they've been living in.
And you've got to relocate to do this anywhere, so she's going to go through all that.
Well, we found a place close, right over the border in the field. She works in P V D, so it's still keeping her close to all her treatment and everything that she needs. But ultimately, at the end of the day, we just figured a better, more comfortable space for her is a win for our family right now, so...
And also, I mean, looking at the market too, for what we're, you know, trying to accomplish, for us to go out and buy something like this, it's far, it's like far more, you know, expensive. So we just figured, you know, basically, it's, I'm going to, you know, be the one paying for the runout. It's my mother's property, so that was kind of the deal. But we would take over ownership, pay for it. And then, like, for instance, I just, there's like a couple of houses within walking distance for us that are half the size, that just got renovated on the inside, and they're asking like five hundred grand. And, you know, I can say it's going to cost us less than that to build a home. And now we have a beautiful place for our family and the mother, and, yeah.
Any other questions? I'm just going to throw one current thought question out there.
Please.
Would you be willing to decrease the size and get rid of that second kitchen in any way, shape, or form?
Second kitchen?
It's your mom's apartment. So instead of making it a two-family, keep it a one-family?
And make it smaller.
And make it smaller?
I'm not that that's kind of, I don't know, for anybody else stands. I mean, I don't even know if it's possible to do it and keep the aesthetics and, you know, that the feasibility for size and all that different stuff, it's massive. That's my opinion.
The mass.
It's a beautiful design. I have any issue with the, with the design at all.
Yeah, I like the plan, but it's the one lot.
Five thousand square feet, that house would be perfect. You know what I mean, on the lot? Any other questions of the board? Any other questions? Thank you.
I appreciate your assistance.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition?
I have to apologize, because I always cry. When you're talking about the parking right now, we always have places to park. Every house on the entire street has what you call that block parking. We all have it. So if we had, like, double space parking, I guess, we'd be the only house on the whole entire street that had that. I love my family, but I wanted to have my own place back, which would be wonderful. They decided to do this, plus I do have stage four cancer. And we thought this would be a wonderful thing, you know, I'll have my own place. But they'll still be kind of close by, and it would be a two-family, never be a three-family. Just re...
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? What was your hand memo, son? Could you give me one?
You can say your name and your address. Oh, sorry. Lisa, Dana? Say that, it's fine, say that.
Thank you. Now, seeing that there is done, I close it for those in favor. I'm going to open up for anybody in opposition. Is there anybody in opposition? Come on.
My name is Tricia Kato, twenty-seven Uppen Road. I'm in the blood of the property. And while I'm sympathetic to the personal situation, I agree with you. It's a massive project. And I would just respectfully request that you do not grant the variance. Thanks.
Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name is Mariece Darrell. I'm at Twenty-Six Uppen Road, my partner. And it's just, it's just so much being built there and having another residence in a very cramped area. I just requested you go to...
Can I please say one more thing? My house right now is an eyesore, it's horrible. I, I, it would be a big house, but I think we could just make the neighborhood beautiful and make the property around us better. You know, since they put the school up, you know, I know they wanted to improve our property, so, you know...
I, before, I ask my next question to the board. I'll ask you the question again. Are you willing to go back if we continue to take another look at it?
Yes.
Did you redesign the property, Mr. Seer, Counselor Seer?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to close it down for those in opposition, or if you wish, the board.
Could you say your name?
I can.
All right, so I'll make the motion to continue it.
I'll second that.
To the February nineteenth, is it nineteen?
February.
No, forget that. Why don't we just give it to the nineteenth? Because if, there's any sort of slop, it might try to take a while. So I would recommend that we continue to February nineteenth.
That work for you guys? So call the board?
Mr. McElwatt?
Yes, continue.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, continue.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes, to continue.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Gisano?
Yes, to continue. Continue to February nineteenth. I would suggest you call Counselor Seer. I'm not sure if I can help you out, but, okay? Excuse me.
So I need you to sign us, please, so...
The next case is case number nine-eight-six-six-one-seventy-three, Beacon Hill Ave.
To allow all existing non-conforming two-family residents in the Arcoor apartment house, we could provide new front addition with less than required left side yard and front step path. Have you been with him?
You lost him?
They haven't been around since, like, last few cases. You know, they left?
Yeah.
I didn't see them leave.
Yeah.
I can't, I don't know why they left.
Why?
Was that frightened?
We didn't take a hint, they said, run our way in, I saw them come in. I thought they were in back, I turned around. I didn't see them leave, not yet.
Continue, all.
I mean, I'll do whatever the board wants.
Want to go, you want to continue, you want to... Want to go, you want to continue on?
Well, I didn't know there was a meeting in February seventh.
Tell you the truth.
There's one the fifth.
There is.
Fifth and the nineteenth. There is one the fifth.
There is?
Yeah. Why don't we continue to the fifth? I'd rather have them here.
Here.
Okay, I mean, I, 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 they were here.
We're fine with it.
Those are a lot of compliments, everybody.
Anybody, does anybody follow the continuation? Anybody who wants to hear the question?
Two seconds.
They probably got coffee.
Anybody pick somebody?
You know, maybe they've got people who, so, I don't know.
Is there a break in between? All right. Last order of business, this case number nine eight six one.
Do we have to vote on it?
I just, I just asked him. Nobody had mentioned that you can continue.
We, we need to continue.
Motion for adjournment? Motion by Mr. Wood?
I think we can vote on it, and then...
Yeah. Yeah?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
So, continue to the fifth, right?
Yes.
February seventh.
Case number nine eight six one thirteen five three.
Can I say something?
You don't, anyone that would consider, shall you ask for your, that?
I asked to reconsider this.
Ask for a vote?
Oh, well, I want to say something before we do that. Is that all right? I, um, I'm allowed to say at the last meeting, there were a lot of infractions, and I couldn't seem how to overcome them. I don't condone the things that they do. However, I went home that night, and I looked at my house, and I know how much it cost me to eat my home. It's big. And I don't have five children. And I thought, if my back is against the wall, what am I doing? So again, I don't condone their actions, but I could understand why they did some of those things. So therefore, that's why I asked for reconsideration. So I hope that you will reconsider. So I, I asked Mr. DeTallio to see how he could help these people, and I think he has come up with some solutions. So I just asked the board, do both reconsiderations, so we can hear what he has to say. Thank you.
Call the hall, vote for reconsideration.
Mr. McElwatt?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Who's here for this?
Mr. Wood, oh, sorry.
Yes, to reconsider.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes.
And Mr. Gesono?
Yes.
Open up. Uh, first, then, 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 Mrs. Curly, um, I, I shared something, a message with the petitions. Um, I shared some of your message with Council Chakutis. Uh, and just let me tell you what I did to address it, because I thought the points that you made that evening in your phone call were accurate to the extent that if people own property, they have certain responsibilities. Uh, everybody makes mistakes, and they can correct mistakes. The biggest mistake, I don't know if it was here, this young man who chinned himself on the sprinkler piping. He is here, so he's paid his price, but, um, that cost a flood, the flood brought the fire department, the fire department brought the ISD, and that was just some of these things. And I took your advice on the back, and I looked at various things, and I spoke to these people about, uh, some of the complaints that were there. They provided me with evidence that they have remediated those things. They have a, a ceremony to repair, uh, that they paid for, and that they had done. And, and I'll tell you, sometimes the truth is the best document, and they said to me, we lived there. We don't, we don't want burn-in, we don't want pass. We lived there. We got five kids, we lived there. So they addressed it, okay? But this is still a logic question about, uh, maintaining. So what I then did is, um, I spoke, uh, to the Housing Authority about, because they have certain targeted areas, like we did on Ninety Street, where there are target areas for loans, because I wanted to see if we could find financial assistance. And I told them, I wasn't getting very far with that, that they may have to come up with some money themselves. And then I met with, um, a member of the Building Department and asked about what work can be done, uh, by a homeowner of a one or two family that doesn't require a permit. So they said interior walls, uh, flooring, uh, you can't do electrical, you can't do plumbing, and they pointed it out to me. And so, uh, what I brought with me is a combination of a proposal to build a new front porch by a licensed builder, some photographs of the work that's been done to remediate and then enhance, so it's sort of like a fore and aft, so the first floor. And then, um, after I did that, I shared, uh, this, these with, uh, Council Chakutis, who told me she would go and look at the property. And, uh, I talked with the petitions, who said they were willing to have me, you know, to the board come in and look at the property, uh, have Council Chakutis look at the interior. And if you recall, um, and Council Chakutis said to me, she, she considered it, it's a two-family. Nineteen twenty-six, it was a two-family. It's been taxed as a two-family. It's a two-family that's got... What information? Hasn't been taxed with two-family, though, in about twenty, twenty, twenty? That's because the city of Lynn, so it's taxed it as a rooming house, okay, in a business district. But they, then they've been taxing it since it was a single family. I just want the facts to be clear, that's all. Yeah, but I was just saying, well, let's start with nineteen twenty-six. It's a two-family. Nineteen fifty, it's a two-family. The only time it's not a two-family is when it was a rooming house with city council consent to, to be a, a lodging house. So at that point in time, there were complaints then about the people. They bought the house from the heirs, the, the son and the daughters of the man who once had it as a, a, a rooming house. But going forward, I think Mrs. Curly's on the right track. It's what do we do to work together to do two things. These people bought the house years ago, okay? They were here in two thousand and five. Their plan in two thousand and five was, well, you don't have a parking, but we're giving you a plan that shows three parking spaces. And in deference to the change in that, we took a space that took away some green space and added the third space. And in reality, if it was a two-family in nineteen twenty-six, there's no required parking for a two-family that existed in nineteen sixty-four as a two-family. But I know that area. I think you know that area. So we can afford three spaces and, and do it, uh, and maintain what's there. So we came up with a parking plan that showed three spaces, which I thought addressed the board's stated concern in two thousand and five about parking. Then the next question was relating to the, um, operation of a system not required in a two-family, the hard-wire system and the sprinkler system. We brought and gave you there, which wasn't there the last time this was in front of the board, evidence that, that the sprinkler system was inspected, the hard-wire system was inspected, and they're in operating and working mode. And the next question comes, and I think this is the, the issue, is with respect to density. But if you look across the street at a twenty-unit apartment, if you look what's being built, and I was with your assistance, there's a twelve-unit apartment owner, Mr. Hyde, at seventy-three North Conference. It's an area with mixed uses, institutional uses. The church, along the corner, has supported these folks. And so this isn't a developer who wants to develop it and then sell it and leave. These are people who've lived there in two thousand and five, two thousand and three. They bought it from somebody who had run it as a lodging house. They had some difficulties, and I think in terms of going forward, that's why I asked for the assistance of both the building department, so I talked with Keith Richards there, about what work they could do because of finances are a consideration. So he explained to me what a homeowner of a single or a two-family can do. Uh, he explained to me what work needed to be done with a licensed builder. So we got the, uh, the builder who wants to replace the porch. And in terms of its uses, a two-family dwelling. So in terms of increasing density, it, it's either gonna be, they're still gonna have five kids, they're still gonna live there. The real question is, what can they do with the first floor? So they started the rehab, which you have the photographs. They have, uh, got a proposal from a contractor to do a replacement of the porch. There's always been two means of being addressed. It meets the common state building code as to fire safety. And in terms of the past violations, I think those were redressed. They, I haven't revisited in my experience. I've gone to the Building Department, if I spoke, as I said, I'm trying to get the financing, if I could get some, uh, lending assistance from the Housing Authority. But I asked, uh, Council Chakutis to take a look, and, uh, she wanted to do so at a leisure, but she explained to me that she understood it was a two-family dwelling, and that one day wanted to use as a two-family dwelling. And I don't think anybody opposed this at the last hearing. I don't see anybody here at this particular hearing. And I think it's how to make it work. And if part of that is, and this is where I talked with some of the principals at the Housing Authority, if you, if you buy a single-family home, they have a program of like first-time home buyers, okay? But there's not really a specific kind of, uh, program that I'm aware of, where I'd be glad to be enlightened, and, and they indicated they're willing to participate in some program that could assist them. But I'll, I'll tell you, I thought the best idea was, they, a gentleman who lives there who said to me, "My family lives there. I want, I want to make this as best as I can for them. It's not like I'm, I'm doing this to prepare tenants, and I don't live there. I live there, and, and I want to use it." So land has its value and its utility. Most people's, most prized possession is their home. I understand it. I hear that of people. I, that's why I respect anybody who comes to me, opposes anything I propose. I never have a quarrel with somebody who thinks their home is their castle. This is their castle. Maybe other people have better castles, maybe other people have poor castles. This is their castle. They want to use it for their own use. And in order to do that, they want to do it lawfully. So because of what happened in two thousand and five, and because of some of that prior history, they may well, if they were trying to do it improperly, they just, who would have been complaining? They could have just, they could have rented out the first floor. It's a two-family. But they came and sought me because they, they spoke with someone else. And I always counsel people that it's always better to do things the right way, to do things lawfully. Because at some point down the line, and you see many of these cases, people come in here and say, "I, I went to sell it, and they told me there's no record, there's no permit, there's no whatever." So assuming that you were to do this, what would compel them to do is to get a permit for alterations. And that's what, why we want to retain this individual, who's a licensed builder. Because then, if you were to grant it, then we'd have an exercise of the approval, put it on the new porch, we have the Building Department inspecting it, the certificate for use and occupancy, and they can go forward. And then they can do it in proper fashion, which is dealing with the health apartment when you lease property, and you clear half tenants, the city has an ordinance. So people would get in the ordinance and inspect it. And, uh, this would be as far as I know, market rate, they're not asking to have a, uh, you know, somebody with a certificate or a subsidy, they just want to rent the first floor. To do that, they understand they have to make it attractive, and they, they want to do it within the budget. To the extent that they can finance those improvements, they're doing it. To the extent that they can do the interior paint, flooring, they're doing that themselves. But, uh, people may not be satisfied with their effort, but I think you ought to recognize that they, they made an effort consistently, consistently, since they've owned the park, to push it forward and to improve. And I think it stands, it is a order that, that if some neighbor, if somebody in that neighborhood objected to what they propose, we're out. They don't, because they know these folks. They know these folks. And of all the uses in that area, this is one of the least intensive uses. And so when I voided the petition, I said, uh, as I usually do, and of course, whatever I write in petition doesn't necessarily make it to the, to the board, to the act, but I always say, I want to make the finding that what they propose, because it seems logical to me, is not substantially more detrimental in its effect on the neighborhood than what is there. Because I, I had pointed to it's acceptance by the neighborhood, but how can a two-family that was there in nineteen twenty-six, can be a two-family in two thousand and nineteen, be substantially more detrimental in its effect on its neighborhood, when it's a twenty-unit shelter across the street? There are all these other uses. So I think in terms of addressing, uh, it's not an over-intensive use of a lot this size, have a two-family on it that was there in nineteen twenty-six, was there in nineteen fifty, was there until some guy came along and ran it as a rooming house, and then sold, his kids sold it to them. They don't want it as a rooming house. They want it as a two-family dwelling. And so if there's more that we could do, uh, you know, if the board's got suggestions, I'm certain that they're open to it. Uh, I've got here the copy of the exterminator's report, there's the, the non-cockeys, I think I got that. I'm glad to give you all the ones that I'm gonna keep. Um, but... So, so it's a two-family dwelling, this will help them pay for the renovation? Well, they want to derive, you know, the... Right, okay. Before, that goes to Mr. Cole's one. If you have family members, if you have, your married sister lives downstairs, if you're related by, by somebody by blood or marriage, then that, that's really a single-family dwelling, all these. They had relatives there in the past that were related either by blood or marriage. Those people decided they'd go back to Georgia or go back somewhere else. So now the space is empty. They made an effort to refurbish it, and then want to use it as a rental of the first floor. They're gonna continue to live on the second, essentially, in the second and the third floor. And the building is got, as I say, a hard-wire system, smoke lines, uh, and I think meets the common parking requirement, even though none of these were required. And, and so I think we tried to address what we understood with legitimate concerns of the board, and trying to address, um, some of the prior history. And in terms of going forward, we're trying to get the assistance of some of these other, uh, city agencies, uh, that might be available to help people such as these, who are not single-family owners, who could maybe take advantage of some of the loan proj- projects, or have their property, like, the Housing Authority has like targeted areas that they go in and label, as they did like on Ninety Street, they do in another. But this area along Park Street, New Carnet, it's not in the current, uh, targeted area.
If this were to be granted, when will this work start?
The question was, when, the, 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 the gentleman who was the builder, when will he begin the work?
We're hoping that, um, with the taxes, by the maximum or so. I mean, because of the shutdown, we don't know exactly if we're gonna get our money on time. But that's what we're hoping.
We're hoping to get the tax refund. As you know, if you get a approval, there's two things that are required. One is they record it to make it effective. But the second is you have to exercise it. How you exercise it can be more than one way. Typically, you get, you pull a permit, but there's, you can't go directly, you have a finite limit for when you pull a permit. So this is an interesting thing, because sometimes I say to people, if there was a strike or a material shortage for some reason, you couldn't exercise it, well, you can always come back and ask to have an extension. So, so here, he's looking to get the source of funds, his, his tax return, but he's not gonna get a tax return until they reopen the federal government. And, but that's when, when he gets his money, that's, I guess, when he pays the...
Like I said, even though the government is closed, you're still gonna get your tax money.
I hope so. I'm never, I'm always, I mean, you're always taking my money, not sending me money. That's all I can tell you. But, uh, they did make an effort. They did get a licensed individual. Uh, they did sue some work, but according to the people I talked to in the Building Department, the work they did, they could do as the owner of a single apartment two-family.
Can I say something? In most of these houses, when I, I got insurance on it, when they charge me, they pull our price, the minute they come back, they charge me. The last time they charged me about twenty-four hundred. When I asked them why, they said the house is too big, it's too big. They've been asking questions, they've been, they have been changing the insurance, because they say it's too big, it's too heavy. I said, you can go and go, it's a single family. It used to be a two-family, but they converted to a single, but it's a single family. It's really big. And I remember the last time, um, and sort of, I remember what happened. And he said, it's gonna even help me with it because it's too big, there is a use. We really need a lot of people, they can, I can use it for people who need to use it. If I want to rent it, because there's people looking for housing, they don't have good places. He gonna help me, but I put on his name.
Do you have too much of neighbors?
There was. People sit upstairs in the basement, there was a three-set of gas meter. So at one point, they had it, so they probably took it out. So it's, the fire unit was there in, uh, what, two thousand and nine, two thousand and twelve. And when they came in, that, because of the leak on the sprinkler system, that's when a lot of these violations started.
And how about the heating system? Is it two furnaces?
Yeah, this is what killing us too, because winter time is the worst time for us. Right now, our business is going like... Right now, it is going almost to... One turn is right now, which is we have to warm up the whole house, because if we don't, the fire's gonna hold on end of custom, or money. So we're paying up at least nine, $10,000 a month for gas, because we have to keep three floors warm enough for the fire not to freeze. So at least if it was two-family, because I have a second boiler, so the tenant gonna pay for it, it's on heat and all that. I mean, we've been living there for almost 17 years. And we're probably one of the longest neighbors in the neighborhood. So we take, you know, we take care of the house, we love the neighborhood. I got a 20 apartment across the street. That's what people that used to live there, some people that used to call me cock-pot. 3:00 in the morning, if I'm hearing noise fighting, I called, you know, Little PD. I mean, I told them, "There's a incident outside, you need to come over." So we probably live there, and my kids, they were born in the house. So I don't see myself, I don't feel like seven hours in the sleep, because it's costing us so much money to maintain it.
I'm in bedroom currently.
Somewhere on 11th, 12th?
Hello, your house.
Yeah, 11th, 12th, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
It was a woman's house.
Used to be a woman's house, that's why.
And we have two kitchens, and we have to warm up the whole bit. It's costing us so much money.
Any other questions for the board? Any other questions?
I get some questions, I don't know if you can do an hour. I don't know, we, you, are you closing in?
So here, I'm just gonna, I was gonna do it after, before the vote, but I just made a... I followed up with Jeannie last week, and I was on this case back in 2005. So, and I did, I do, I have an open mind to helping this situation out. But I'm very wary, and I have a hard time rewarding some troubling, you know, situations with that piece of property over the years, with the occupancy. But I'm not, I'm not here to browbeat about this, but this is, this is some of the history of some of the issues. So it's like, what do we do going forward? We've ordered this tonight, we're increasing the value by $100,000. What are we getting, what's the name we're getting for it? What are we getting for it?
Well, the value of the...
What's the city getting for it?
It gets increased tax.
Very little, maybe a thousand a year. But what about the condition of the property?
Well, hopefully, it's gonna be improved.
Well, but see, but there's no plan, and this is...
Well, there is a plan, there's a proposal by a regular licensed builder.
For a porch, I'm talking about, I see the interior pictures, and the talk about the housing authority, and grant and loans, but here we are again. I'd like to see a plan, I'd like to know where we're going with, where these people are gonna be able to go with this thing. That's what I'm hoping for.
Well, but I think part of the key, you know, also, you see that registration? I talked to the health department, you know what that said? That's because they got notice from a bank that they intended to foreclose it.
Yeah, I'm...
So they were struggling.
Yeah.
They maintained, they kept the house, they fought to keep their home, okay? The repairs, 2014, this is 2019, they made the repairs, they dealt with the water damage, which they take responsibility for.
Are you gonna let me finish, and then you can...
No, no, I'm saying, they made an effort to address it.
I'm not saying they didn't, but where do we go forward? We're putting another unit in the property.
Well, I think you can put stipulations on it. You wanna see the work done in six months? I think that's a stipulation you could put over.
I'll tell you what I would like. I would like to have an inspector out here, like we did in 2005 on the system. List what needs to be done to make that a legitimate two-family, and then how... And then let's work with them, and how we...
And that's why I didn't presume, you know, I went to see Keith Richards in the building department, to determine just that. So he said, "If they do plumbing, electrical, those require licensed workmen, they need permits." "Can they paint the walls?" "Yes." "Can they redo the floor?" "Yes." Then I asked him about the picture of the sink and the counter. So I said, he said, "If they replace the sink, they need to get a plumber." So I went through with him, showing him those very pictures, saying, "What work do they need to get, can they do themselves, because of cost factor? What work should they pay a licensed builder?" And to the extent that I understood it, I appointed the...
You know, normally, and this is what the problem is, you know, we're trying to... I think we're all trying to be helpful. But, you know, we got a situation in Husbands Court, they came in with beautiful plants. This is how we're converting, we're making, we're increasing the non-conforming two-family. We sometimes say, "Hey, where's the, show us the interior. What's the interior gonna look like now that..." You know, we sort of bypassed all that. And I don't think, at least, I don't think I'm asking for too much, to know, for me to vote on this. Like I said, when increasing the value of a piece of property, what's the neighborhood getting out of it? How do we know it's legitimate? I'd just like to know what work needs to be done to make this a legitimate two-family? And how, and what's the plan to get the work done?
Well, I think that that could be...
Otherwise, we're just...
Well, that's why I...
We're speculating.
No, and that's why I went, and I'd be speculating as much as you. So that's why I went to the building department. And I showed them the photographs, I told them what was intended, they gave me...
Wait, is the list?
Excuse me?
Is there a list?
He looked at it, and he said that they could do interior paint, this is what he told me, but I'm certain Keith Richards would give you a lot of that.
Well, I guess, when we're doing a painting, doing a floor by a owner of a one or a two-family does not require a building.
I guess we're trying to understand, is it already a two-family, where they have separate access?
Well, see, no, that means to be aggressive.
No, 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 or is it, you go into the front door, and then you...
This is...
Is it already separated?
No, that means to be aggressive, it gets to the second and the third floor.
And to the first? All you need from us is...
They've never been cited.
Rezone it after, as a two-family.
Excuse me?
All you need from us is to rezone it.
You need two access from each floor, parking two-family.
I'm not, because I asked, yes, they just need our approval, the usual.
So now back into a two-family.
Right, so we wanna recognize, it's like, it's this great theoretical theory, that it walks like a duck, and it talks like a duck. It's a duck, but we need some, we're trying to do it quietly, for many people who don't do it. And so we wanna get a permit. To get a permit, we have to identify the work, and to the extent that it's plumbing, or those, I understand, plumbing or electrical are involved, putting in another heater, or you need to get the gas fitting inspector to put the boiler in. But who would put those things in a license? Without, yeah, without, hey, you can pay somebody, it's a license.
The question is, where is the end here? Where's the list of things maintaining the property? That's what I wanted to answer, as most of these violations, we had in the first of the house. Okay, because that was our first one, there's a lot we didn't know about properties. So we need to get in the long run, and maybe for more people. We got our snow blower, so all these type of things, we have. This is why, like you can see, the last violation we had was years ago. We had a lot of issue with the property. I take care of the property myself, I clean, you know, I blow the leaves and everything. As far as the cars, you know, there's an app on offer, you know what I mean? We buy cars and we sell them. So I bought a car for, let's say, $600, I put it for sale. So I thought that's something I could do, put one car in front of my property. But I found out I couldn't do it, I stopped. So there's a lot of things, when you learn in life, you learn it the hard way. But it's when you keep doing it, that's when it becomes a property. So as you guys can see, the last issue we had was 2016, with the bank we had, that has nothing to do with violation. So I understand what you're saying, we live there, that's our investment, we live there.
And you know what, I wanna see that property cleaned up. So, you know, believe me, I said, I have an open mind to this, but I need some guarantee. I'm only one person, I just need some guarantees, I need to see a plan, I need to see that... If we give them this opportunity, it's gonna be, it's gonna be taken care of.
We'll sign a paper, even for the next five years. If you ever find that property is to a point where you guys won't give me a fine, you could... You know what I mean, I'll turn it back to a one-family. I give you my word, because this is my property, my kids live there, you know what I mean? These are 16 and 12, we still take our kids to school in the morning. So, you know, I mean, I don't wanna bother about it. We're good parents, we take care of our kids. So, and like I said, we wanna be able to survive this, because this house is taking us, you know, basically to our breath, we just, that's not wrong. I mean, we work every year, depending on our tax return, to bring our bill to death, you know what I mean?
The building department gave us a list of what has to be done to make that a livable two-family.
I can ask Mr. Richards, I mean, I showed him the book.
You mentioned the housing guy, they have inspectors, and maybe he contracted them.
Yeah, but I was hoping that they would have grants, okay, to help if I...
Well, they do have grants, I mean, they'd, it'd be nice if he had something, he had said that, "Hey, I got an application, you filled it out." No, so again, I need this, I just, it's like, you know, just, I need to see something that this is on the road to recovery.
And you're sitting here explaining us how involved in the property you are, and how much you love it, and all the things that you want for the property. Your children are 16 years old. All 13 of these violations happened in the past 16 years, so, I mean...
Okay, now we...
You have to, you know, you have to understand where we're coming from, we're looking at a list of violations over the past 15 years, that's just keep happening.
No, no, I don't intend to, that's what I'm trying to speak to you. We were new to this, we were new to it, there's a lot we didn't know about. Now we didn't know, we neglected.
In 2004, you were new to this. In 2016, you aren't new anymore, you're 15 years away.
2016, now, they tried to foreclose.
Yes, they're gonna stay like, drop back, drop back, one thing on the west, and it's not that anymore.
Like the basement, we tore it down, you know what I mean? We asked, whatever they asked us to do, we've done it.
So, all right, so that's a resolution.
Well, I think Mr. George, I can make that request, I did speak with them. They did give me general principles, but I can have them. I told you that, I talked with them about making the interior available for inspection by any member of the board, or by, I talked to Constable Jakubus, she wanted to come in and look at it. So it seems to me, we're just trying to get it in the ball back. But the starting point is having somebody go in. I didn't know that the housing authority would inspect a property.
Well, they have to inspect for their homes.
Well, but I was just saying, I don't believe the authority would do it.
But saying all these things is great, I mean, like you said, most people, a lot of people come in, they've already initiated up, there'd be a letter there from Mr. Jakubus, there'd be a letter there from the building department, there'd be an application from...
But I know a part, and I can deliver, and I knew what the limited funds were that they had.
At one point, seemed to be cut bait, sell the house and buy a single-family. I mean, the two-family...
I thought it was a goal, to try to keep people in the city of land, pay their taxes, have them be good citizens. Nobody's come here and complained about them citizens, our neighbors in the neighborhood. I mean, yeah, we could do that in a lot of places. There'd be a lot fewer people in land, cities in dire financial straits, there'd be less money to spend. So, yeah, they're gonna add value, they're gonna spend their money to add value. They're not developers, they're homeowners. They're looking to get a return on their investment for their benefit, not for somebody else's benefit. So they're willing to do it within the financial constraints they have.
They'll do something then. You sit there, tell me about all these things, Sam. I'm a homeowner like you, I take care of what I have to. I do, and I make the process happen. Nobody's making this process happen, you're sitting here asking us to do something.
I know, I know, I do ask other people for assistance. I've talked with the housing authority, the building department, the health department, the dean. Okay, I've talked with the board counselor. And so, if you want a program, I'm just saying to you, it's what we have asked, is what they qualify for, and how they qualify. But as far as identifying the work that needs to be done, I did it in a general term, I'm certain. That Keith Richards will go out there, look at it, and give me a list, that's what the building...
I'd like that.
Let's give them a month, then come back, come in here a month, we'll go with an action plan, we'll have a conversation. I mean, that's not like the...
No, no, that's what it is.
Go create an action plan, and come back with a plan in a town, sure.
Yeah, that's all I'm looking for at this point in time. You know, you gotta meet us halfway here on this one, I think, that's how I see it.
That's reasonable.
No, I'm not suggesting it isn't, I'm just saying that... Do you hear them deny that they did anything wrong? They admitted the neighborhood stays, okay? They didn't have to come here and go engage in this. There are a lot of people who don't do it, but they're trying, they're trying. Maybe they didn't do it perfectly, maybe they didn't do it correctly, but they're trying to get it, okay? And if they could do a better job, and I could help them, I'd do everything I can to help. And I've reached out to people, and I think in terms of identifying it, I actually, I hate to admit it, I didn't know what a work a homeowner could do, and that's why I met with the building department, on their own. And that was explained, I know that if you have three or more units, that's called controlled construction, you have to get somebody with a stamp and a seal, and do whatever, okay? So I wanted to clarify that, and they did. And, but, put in a application, get you a list, and then, as I understand from Mr. DeShono, he doesn't have a list, he wants to know how those things are gonna get addressed.
Well, if this board wants to help these people, or they wouldn't be back here again after they were denied.
No, I understand that, and I had him in after that, and I explained to him that, and I think I said it very upset, that nobody's saying that they don't have a responsibility to stay.
We just can't keep cocked wash, without knowing exactly what Mr. Cole was asking for. So I think that's a very fair thing.
So is that the 19th?
So motion, motion to continue to the 19th?
Yeah.
To see an action plan, and some sort of application, to how it's gonna happen, so...
What needs to be done?
Application, applications.
What the plan might be to address it, right, yeah.
Okay, next question to the board, is it possible for them to actually get a license, plumber to actually start rectifying some of these problems? Is that doable? A licensed plumber, licensed electricians? Because I know they're missing a meter for gas and electricity.
Well, they wouldn't, I don't...
It wouldn't be...
They wouldn't be putting a second meter in until they... This becomes a three, a two-family, they're gonna be three meters.
Three meters, you're right.
A house meter and a...
Yeah, they can't do that.
No, but they can do all the, they can hire some... They can do all, they can, they can take the efforts to do all the work they want, they're not gonna be able to get the gas meters or the electric meters until it's approved, but the building department won't approve them to do that, but they can do, they can do the work.
Yeah.
But you can rectify your own risk, there's no guarantees, it's gonna be a two or three families, so you're gonna do that at your own risk, but yes, you could do that.
Yeah, you can rectify all your problems, fix all your problems, but you won't be able to gain utilities.
Turn it to a separate utility turn.
The only thing we have to do at this point is, because we're taking the carpet out, because we have the carpet, and then we do, you know, we send in the floor, hard floor. I saw that the board didn't try to go, said, "I painted, you know, it was not..."
Sure, thanks, Sam. Anybody second the motion?
Second. You say?
Motion, babe, second, follow on.
Mr. McCullough?
Um, yes, to continue.
Mr. Walton?
Yes, to continue.
And Mr. Curly, yes, to continue.
Mr. Wade? Mr. Cole?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wade. Mr. DeShono?[1778.60]